...Commission, and we're going to be talking about the Water Master Plan, I believe. And I presume that means I get to look at David or Nancy Crushauer to get it started.
Nancy's good to go. Nancy's show tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and Planning Commissioners. It's great to have a joint work session tonight. I don't think we've had one for quite a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I really am grateful for the Planning Commission members attending. They've been through this -- well, they've been through the presentation once. Some of them have been through the several times when they've attended some of the public meetings we've had.
Hello.
But they have some good insight on the master plan because they've already reviewed it and talked about it a fair amount. And before we take it to the City Commission for Public Hearings and Adoption as an ancillary document to our comprehensive plan, I thought it'd be a good idea to have a work session where we could give you a presentation on what the master plan's all about. Many of you have been through this before in previous master planning efforts. But what we've done is our master plan that was adopted, I think it was adopted in 2004, is a lot of the projects have been completed. We've had the three UGB expansion areas come in, and it was time to update that master plan. And so we have a draft of the update, and we updated the model for the entire city and included the areas that are covered by the existing UGB when we developed the CIP. And what I'm anticipating is that this document will be used as a foundation as the City Commission and the public considers what the situation for water rates are going to be in Oregon City. We've got a rollback coming in 2013, 14, 15. And I would like to make sure that the city is prepared as best they can for that charter requirement. And I think it's important for us to start talking about it now. And without this updated document, we really wouldn't have current conditions, current needs, deficiencies, what we need for the future. A lot of this stuff for the future would be paid for with development or system development charges. But this still lays the groundwork for consideration of what the future rates, what the Commission thinks the future rates should be for the community, what the community will support. And so that's why we're making sure we have some real good conversations about the whole thing. So I'm going to introduce Walt Meyer. He's here. He is from West Jostin Associates. They did our master plan back in early 2000s, and they also did the update. He's going to give a PowerPoint presentation. And we also have John Lewis here, our Operations Manager, and we have Eli. Eli is our Water Operations Supervisor. And John Burrell was the Project Manager. He's in the Engineering Group. And then we also have Kevin Horace, who's one of our Water Utility Maintenance Specialists. So if you have questions that I can't answer, I'm sure one of them will be able to answer. So Walt, you want to come up and start off?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Walt Meyer, and I was a Project Manager for the Water Distribution System Master Plan Update. And I'm going to give you an overview of the master plan and invite you to ask questions as we go. I think that'll be the most productive, so if you have questions, please feel free to get my attention, and I'll do my best to answer them. I'll talk a little bit about, very briefly, about the service area, your water demand both now and in the future, a little bit about your existing water distribution system, and then expansion needs, recommended improvements, and a lot on financing. And finally, of course, questions, and I'll entertain those as we go. So, starting off with the service area, you serve now about 32,000 people and almost 10,000 customers. And of course, as you grow in the future, that's going to get larger. The planning that we do for the water distribution system entails the entire urban growth boundary. And that's important because it's very expensive to put pipes in the ground. And so it's best to go ahead and size the major network of the larger pipes to serve out into the urban growth boundary. And then as development takes place, the developers will actually put in a network of smaller pipes to serve individual tracts of land and so forth. But the basic network of pipes, pumps, and reservoirs are the responsibility of the city, and so we size for that system. Right now, on an average day, you use a little bit over 4 million gallons a day of potable water. In the summertime, when it's hot and people are watering their lawns, you use a little bit, right around 7 million gallons a day on a maximum month basis. And on a maximum day basis, you approach 10 million gallons a day of water that you are using in the city. And on a peak hour basis, it goes up over 20, 22, 23 million gallons per day. That peak, however, is met by your reservoirs. So as you're, you will still be producing at a base rate, but there'll be a drawdown of your reservoirs to meet that instantaneous demand as people are really using a lot of And just to give you some idea, you can see that about 2.2, this is now the average day demand of 4.2. You can see about 2.2 of that is used by single-family residences and 0.7 by commercial-industrial, 0.6 by multifamily, and a little bit 0.3 by institutional, which is schools, cities, functions, and so forth. Your water distribution system, first, this is the water distribution system I'm going to talk about, but it is obviously very much linked to your water supply, which is provided by the South Fork Water Board, and you're clearly a member of that board. And you have an excellent supply of water, although there are some issues in terms of long-term supply and needs. That's not part of this particular study. This particular study is really how you distribute that water to the customers. We have storage, extensive metering system, pumping stations, and distribution piping, and I'm going to talk about each one of those. First of all, storage, you have right now 18, a little over 18 million gallons of treated water storage in your system. That's what you have in the five reservoirs that I show on this slide here. Large one, of course, being the Mountain View 2, which is over 10 million gallons of storage. Then the Barlow Crest has 1.75, Boynton 2, Henrisy 2, and the Mountain View Number 1, the new one, has 2 million gallons of storage. For the system that you have right now, you have adequate storage. You do not need to add more storage to serve existing customers. As you grow in the future, and I'll show you this, there are some areas where you will have to buy, build some more storage. But for right now, you're in good shape on storage. The Oregon City Water Distribution System is relatively complex, and I show this here because of the difference in elevation that you have in the city. You have a lot of different pressure zones to serve. And the whole system is tied together, but you are able to serve all of these different pressure zones effectively. But it does involve some different reservoirs, pressure-reducing stations, pump stations, and so forth to be able to do that effectively. Because in any given pressure zone, you can only serve a certain elevation change, and then you either have too low a pressure or too high a pressure. And so you break the system up into different zones. In your water distribution pipeline system, you have about 154 miles of pipeline in the ground. And this chart here shows the distribution of that chart. You have inherited some old, small stuff, and you've got, and I'll be talking a little bit more about that, but the key number here is 154 miles. Now, pipelines typically have a useful life of about 50 to 100 years. And we actually have a little show and tell here, and I'm going to talk about that. Is this on?
It is. You can take it off if you want.
Pardon?
You can take it off to handle it. It might be easier.
Okay. This is some pipe that Eli's crews have taken out of the ground recently. And you can see, even though the pipe wall thickness is still there, you have sometimes both external corrosion, and a lot of times, the external corrosion will be pinholes. So you'll have good, solid, thick pipe, but there'll be one place where there's a pinhole. And that's because of cathodic action where the electrons leave the pipe, and as they leave, they take particles with them, and so you've got a hole. In fact, Eli was telling me the other day, they threw their leak detection program, unearthed one that had not surfaced, so they were not aware of it until they did the survey. And they had all about, what, an inch plus diameter on a 90 PSI pipe. So you can imagine how much water was being lost by that facility. And in your system, about 15% of your water is unaccounted for, and most of that is through leaks. Other example, this is one that shows that tuberculation takes place inside, and especially on the smaller pipes, you'll get to the point where there's no more opening. It'll just keep doing that to the point where you're not getting any more water through there. More important, the quality of the water that people get bad. If there's any kind of activity, let's say there's a high flow, then all of a sudden, the people start getting orange water.
And these are mostly taste and odor characteristics, not the health aspects.
A lot of health issues, but it's an aesthetic issue. When you turn on the tap and it's not clear water, it's not particularly.
You also get more friction loss when you have a lot of tuberculation inside the pipe. You want to show us what we like?
A top.
It's a nice duckle iron pipe.
This is an example of a new one, and I'm bringing it close because if you inspect it closely, you can see that that actually has cement lining on the inside, which is very good for water distribution because it prevents the tuberculation that you saw on the other steel pipe. So that's, this is a ductile iron pipe with the cement mortar line coating. So this is what a new piece of pipe would look like. This will probably last, in the right conditions, will probably last 75 to 100 years. A lot of the old cast irons and steel lying close.
And our standard has been ductile iron since, as long as I've been here. So all pipe that's been put in the ground, probably since the mid-'90s, has been primarily ductile iron pipe.
I'm going to ask a question.
Before that, we had others that don't last as long.
The fact that we have such leakage, I guess it's just not possible to have some kind of mechanism of detecting it without just finding the leak?
Yes, there is. In fact, you do, right now, your operations group is doing one-third of the system each year. And then when they find the leaks, they go out and fix the bigger ones that they find.
We just completed our annual leak detection program. And when we do it annually, we also check the steep slopes areas around town annually so that we have a sense of if there's anything going on there. And then the crews just spent the last several weeks fixing what was found.
What happens is as these lines get like this, they'll start finding more and more leaks in the same reach of line. And that's how they bring to the top of the list the next replacement project. So if you assume an average life of 75 years for your pipes, and you have 150 miles in the ground, the arithmetic is relatively straightforward, you need to replace about two miles a year to stay even. If you do less than that, you're going to, you will essentially be eating into the capacity and the viability of your system. And this is what I call, if you were to replace two miles a year at a cost around $2.3 million, then that's what I would call a sustainable system. You're keeping up with the replacement of the pipe so that 20, 50, 75 years down the road, your system is still viable. So that's an important factor to put in the back of your head as we move ahead on this.
You know, I think that something that folks may not always think about, but 75 years out of a piece of infrastructure is pretty darn amazing. So I really feel like we're putting in sustainable stuff that lasts a really long time, but you still have to take care of it.
They'll have to take care of it, yeah.
Walt, do we know what the average age of the existing pipe is in the ground?
We do have some, and some of it is identified and some it isn't. But in the master plan and the database that we have for the pipes, yes, we have. On some, on quite a bit of it, we have ages. There are some where we don't. But it's all in the system. And that's actually how, one another way, we'll run a query on the system to see what's older than 70 years, and then that brings it up to the top. And I don't have statistics on that tonight, but we do have some of that. Not all of it, it's not 100%, but we have some.
The older, yeah, there's a lot of information. We don't have the age.
Okay. The other thing is, you see the water meter over there? That's particularly critical. First of all, it doesn't last 75 years, maybe 10 or 20. And the thing with water meters, when they go bad, they start turning slower. And that's not good when you're measuring water, because less revenue.
This is a service, too. Eli, you want to talk about your service here and this meter? Hope you don't mind. We're just doing some show and tell. This is our only chance to talk to you guys about stuff like this.
I'm Eli D. Berry, Water Operations Supervisor. This is a service line that we pulled out of Ogden Drive. So it's galvanized, and it's the same kind of setup. I can't even see you through the pipe there, actually. But we put in one-inch copper surfaces now, service pipe. So that's what, that's what it looks like.
We've just been working on. We've just been working on Ogden, doing the, replacing slowly but surely replacing the entire length in-house.
The other point with this, this is cast iron, and the majority of the pipe that you have in the city is cast iron. And when it breaks, it breaks usually circumference-wise, so we put a Band-Aid around it, a temporary Band-Aid. The difference between cast and ductile is I can take a sledgehammer and hit this, and it'll break like an eighth shell. And the reason why these break is because the ditch is settling, the pipe is settling in the ditch and whatnot. A lot of these were just put right on the ground underneath the, or in the ditch. So they settle and crack. Those, I can hit that with a sledgehammer all day long, and it will break.
Eli, how old were the pipes?
Oh, are these? These were probably put in the, I'd say, '60s, late '60s. But they're again, depending on how they were laid in the ditch, right now, we have better standards where we're putting crushed rock around the pipe and whatnot. These were just actually put at the bottom of the ditch so that even the settling and whatnot will break them.
The bedding and backfill is really, really important for how long a pipe lasts.
So, the bottom line, the new stuff we're putting in, I think we can get 75 years out of. I think the old stuff, I know, the steel pipe, 30 to 40 years, cast iron, maybe 50. And we've got a lot of cast iron in the ground. Now, as you grow and fill out into the urban growth boundary, obviously, the demand will increase, and this shows what that demand increase will be. It's, yes?
You keep talking about building out into the urban growth boundary, but your projections also include infill inside the existing city, too.
That's correct. We looked both at the urban growth boundary and the vacant land inside of the city to come up with these numbers.
So even if there aren't any annexations, there still might be growth?
Exactly. Exactly. So this shows what the demand increases can be on the average. You're going to be increasing to about 7 million gallons a day, maximum around 12, and so And to do that, you've got a number of pipeline improvements that will be necessary to serve that area. And I want to emphasize here that the improvements necessary to serve the urban growth boundary, those are going to be funded primarily by system development charges. And in fact, when we talk financing later on, that's the assumption we have made. However, you still need to plan for them. And this graph shows that there's three reservoirs and a network of piping to connect them. Now, some of the reservoirs are shown outside the urban growth boundary, and that's simply so that we could get them at an elevation so that they could serve the upper parts of the areas inside the urban growth boundary.
Maybe coming to it, but you mentioned we have sufficient storage now. How much larger do we become before we don't? Or do you have an idea?
It's much more related to the development in these upper zones. In other words, these reservoirs that are in here are primarily laid out to serve these upper elevation areas of the urban growth boundary. So I think right now, you could probably be fill out within the existing city limits and be fine. But as you start building out, then you'll have to provide additional reservoirs.
The reservoir that's at the bottom of the drawing, that's, would be serving the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan area at full development. We'd need that. And then the one that's kind of smack dab in the middle of the page, that is a new reservoir at the intermediate park place pressure zone that would be assisting with adequate storage capacity for the park place.
So these are future reservoirs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the number of improvements that you need for making, for bringing up the existing system, and these are, these are improvements necessary so that you solve some fire flow problems. Those are quite limited, but I showed the list here. You can see that there's some new pipelines that are laid out to improve overall distribution within the existing system. But you can see they're modest in terms of the overall cost. The largest demand for renewal is renewal and replacement, is to replace the old lines, just like we talked about here where you've got these old pipes. And what this list shows is what we believe are the pipelines that are in greatest need for replacement. This is a list that's going to be in flux, and I have, in fact, in the notebook and in the back of the plan, a list of projects that we haven't funded yet because it's simply, I've put in enough projects to take us out for about 10 years if we are able to fund them. But there's another list in there that needs to be generated or brought to the forefront as some of these other projects are taken off the list. And these are projects where there's known leakage, known problems associated with the pipelines. Yes?
And most of these you have listed are, look like they're pipelines, except for the Boynton reservoir. So then would these be part of the two miles?
Exactly.
Okay. So it wouldn't be this and two miles?
That's correct. This is simply, if you had the funding to do the two miles a year, this is where you'd start.
Has there been any period of time where we haven't kept up so that we're trying to keep up with what didn't happen in the past?
Yeah, I think there was a period in the '80s and the '90s where there was very little pipe replacement. And in the, since about 1998, 2000, we've been doing annual pipe replacements, trying to, we don't, we haven't been doing 2 million a year. We also did some major, major improvements to the 10 and 1/2 million gallon Mountain View reservoir. We did the seismic retrofit up there. We built a new pump station up there, which were significant improvements for our water system. And that took a big chunk of money in about 2004 through 2007 time period, maybe a couple years later, you know, mid, mid this decade.
Now, you have been raising rates roughly, most years, 3%. In fact, you're limited to 3% by the charter. And in fact, you have, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. This is, this is a historical operating expenses in red, and the blue shows the revenue for the last five fiscal year. So you can see, you've had a significant differential, and that has been invested in capital projects over the last five years. But you can also see that the increment is shrinking. And frankly, that's because the cost of doing business has been greater than 3% per year. Your labor costs have gone up more, over 5%. And that's not just you. It seems to be the case in Oregon because of pers and other factors. And so you can see that the, that the increment has shrunk.
Health, care, health insurance.
Health insurance is the other one. Yeah.
Is the differential being spent each year, essentially, in terms of capital improvements?
Yeah, we try to keep, I try to keep, I think, a 5% of operations contingency in the water fund. So we have a contingency, but that's a prudent thing to do.
Yeah.
Now, looking forward, you can see, this is based upon the ordinance that you've already passed for the water system. So you can see that for the next four years, moving, well, including this current fiscal year, that there's a differential of about half a million to $600,000 between the operating expenses and the revenue. And so you could, in fact, spend that amount on capital projects, well short of the $2.3 million.
Hey Walt, could you just go back to the last slide? I just want to point out that you noticed that the blue didn't necessarily just go up at that nice even slope over the last five years, and partially, well, part of it's because there is more conservation in all of our plumbing systems, in the newer plumbing. But it's also has had to do with weather, cooler summers, not as much consumption, so not as much revenue.
Well, that and also the economy. The fact is, when the economy has suffered, people find ways to cut back. And you can see that that's reflected here, that the revenue's been, is essentially flat. And I know in my community, the same things happen. We had a rate increase one year of 10%, and the rate, and the revenue went down. Now.
Yeah, it's just the way it is. It's not a certain.
So while we project on the basis of increases, reality sometimes is different. The nice thing of having a pay-as-you-go program where you fund your capital from rates, that if you have an off year because it's been very, very wet, or the economy, or whatever the factor is, you have the, you have the ability to simply scale back the following year and then get caught up in the future.
And I think maybe the 11, 12 also reflects the South Fork Water Board rate increase.
That's, yeah.
How big of a factor is people's water usage when you're figuring out the operating expenses?
Most of your costs are fixed. So that's not entirely true with, the more you use, the more you pay for the delivery of water, the South Fork Water Board. However, for example, in your operations, when you look through your costs, their labor, there, I mean, there are some variable costs, but they're relatively minor when you look at the overall distribution of where your costs are. So revenue is very much a factor. Costs tend to be fixed. Now, I did show for fiscal year 2015-16, based upon the current cost picture, I show here what the, what the makeup is of the 5.2 million costs that are projected for fiscal year 2015-16, just so you get an idea where those costs are. You can see salaries, fringe benefits, materials and services. The South Fork Water Board, that's what you pay for the water. Pump station operations, chemicals and materials. Now, chemicals, obviously, is one that would be very variable. General Fund Administration and the franchise fee.
We pay a franchise fee.
And a general fund administration. I took it out, but the reason I showed you the year 2015-16, that is the first year that you have no debt service costs. In other words, that's the year the rollback has to be in place. And you are paying right now roughly $200,000 a year for debt service costs. But by the, by the year 2015-16, these are the projected expenses excluding your debt service cost on the bonds that are outstanding. Now, I also show here just a quick graph of the history of the cost that you've been paying for the water to the, to the South Fork Board. Just so you know, kind of, you can see, you're up right around 1 point, a little bit over $1.4 million for this current fiscal year that's being projected for payment to the South Fork Water Board. It's a significant amount of your overall water revenue. And here's the debt service, like I said, it's about $200,000 a year. This is a debt service payment that you'll be making for the next four years. And at the end of 14-15, that's when the rollback takes place because you're done. Yes?
Can you go back one? What's the dip?
No. I took it right off the.
708. David Wimmer might know, based on climate or something like that.
No.
It's been a very, very, very dry year, and they use more water, but I can't answer that.
We could look, we could get back to you if you'd like.
Well, it's just, it's a question's going to come up.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. It could be one of my good charting, charting.
There was somebody with South Fork Water Board that year sitting here.
It's a good point, yeah.
The drought year wouldn't do that, though. Do the opposite.
Well, it could be that the 07-08 was an off year because of.
Yeah.
Wet conditions. But I. Wet conditions, but I, we need to look it up.
Yeah.
Because it's a big dip, it's not like a little fluctuation.
Yeah. Now, given that you're facing the rollback, we've looked at a number of scenarios of what you could do. And the first one we looked at is you, if you were to stay with a status quo where you've had a 3% increase on an annual basis and did not roll, in other words, the voters would have to approve not rolling back the rates, that's the first scenario we looked at. The second one we looked at is with the rollback, and how you calculate the rollback is a question mark. So we looked at it two different ways. One way is simply to roll it back to 1994 rates and then increase it 3% per year as allowed by the, by the charter. And the second way is to say, roll it back to the 1994 rates, but increase it only the 3% in those years that the commission actually had a rate increase. And there were five or six years where you did not increase the rates, and so obviously the amount that you would collect then is less. And then the fourth one is what I call the sustainable system, where you would eliminate the rollback, have a higher rate increase for several years so that it gets you to the point where you could actually generate the $2.3 million per year to maintain the system. So those are the four scenarios that we took a look at. And here's the first one. You can see a steady rise in revenue, and this again, I, is up, you know, it's not going to be that smooth, it's going to be bumpy along the way. But this shows how it would go up over a 10-year period. And you can see that by, you know, several years out, you're building, you have a little bit over a million, up to all, out here it's up to almost a million and a half that you are creating in revenue that you could use for capital expenditures, if you stayed on that, on that system. The second scenario, you can see that right here, the revenue drops off significantly, and the costs drop off a little bit, and this drop reflects the fact that you're not paying debt service. And what, but what you can see, even in this particular scenario, there is no room for any capital expenditures. In fact, you're going to have to cut operations by a half a million roughly a year to be able to stay even. If you go to the second rollback option, the drop is even greater. And you can see here that the deficit is over $1 million per year in terms of your, the difference between revenue and exist, and the projected operation maintenance cost. And you can see here is that 5.2 million I showed you earlier, what the, what the breakout is. So you can see there's over a million dollar shortfall in that particular scenario. The third scenario is no rollback of rates, a 3% increase through fiscal year 14-15, then a 10% increase in 15-16, followed by two years of a 5% increase, and then back to the 3% increase. And this, you know, this is one way of doing it, there's clearly other ways. But if you went with that particular scenario, you can see here that the, that by the year, you know, 2020, you've, you've got the one point, or out here, you've got the $2.3 million available for capital expenditures.
And, I mean, note that between now and 2015, we don't, so we have to budget, you know, wisely, and.
Up to that point, it's actually the same as scenario one. And I was just thinking that there's a lot of work to do between now and then in terms of getting the word out to the community in terms of what needs to be done. And so it would be, it's just not possible to do anything, in my view, until you have a vote of the people. And before you have a vote of the people, there has to be a lot of dialogue, people have to understand what this is all about. And so that's the reason we simply assume that there's going to be, that's going to stay the course based upon the existing rate ordinance, or rate resolutions you have in place. And then somewhere out there, then that's when you either get a role, you either eliminate the rollback or you don't, or some combination. So what I'm recommending that the city do is, first of all, and most important, I think, is begin that dialogue with the citizens. We've started that to some level with this master plan. This is a good vehicle for doing that. We've had some public meeting, we've had meetings with the citizens' involvement group. We're meeting with you, and there'll be other opportunities to do that. But it's going to be after a lot more information available to the public so that they understand what's at stake with your water distribution system. I think that one of the things that struck me is, you know, the sort of the, the rollback is sort of the bad news situation, but the, the good news is that in 2014-15, you've paid off your debt. You are debt-free as a utility for your water distribution system. So that's good news. You have a system that works well, you have an excellent water supply, but you have to make some investment in that system to keep it going, that people need to understand that. The second one is to adopt a financial plan for scenario three or something like it that generates enough revenue to be sustainable. The third thing is, I think it's important that you show on your water bills how much of the water, the revenue that you collect goes to the South Fork Water Board. They are a separate legal entity. They do, they have rate increases and take action, that's, that's part of that board's action, which you are represented on, but it is a separate entity. So I recommend that you show it separately, it's part of the education of the people, what happens with the water, with the revenue that you collect. So with that, I'd love to answer questions.
It's not a question I don't think anybody here is going to answer because it's probably a legal one. The fact that South Fork is a different entity, it's owned by different, two, two different cities, and whether increases in rates that South Fork implements can be looked at distinctly under our charter provisions from rates that we charge. And it's, it's a question that I don't expect you to answer, but it's one that, that's one that might be, might be explored.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you suggest putting on water bills, portion of the costs that are going to South Fork Water Board, would you break that down into, okay, your water bill is $66 and $45 of it is going to South Fork, or would you do it in overall?
I think I show, you, you're going to have a total bill. And, and it's just like, I get an EWEB bill, okay? But then it shows how much of it is for electricity, how much it is for water, how much is for sewer, how much is stormwater, how much, et cetera. And I, so I would do the same thing, I'd simply have, here's your total bill, here's how much is for water distribution for Oregon City, here's how much for water purchase for the South Fork Water Board, and if there's anything else on the bill, it would show separately.
Okay, so for that individual household or user?
Exactly, yeah.
I was talking to Nancy a little bit yesterday about this, but it's come up before that Nancy says it wouldn't be difficult to figure it out, but the differential between uses in the summer and in the winter, and since probably a good portion of that summer uses for irrigating lawns and so forth, whether we could have a differential rate for that additional amount in the summer, maybe change people's behavior a little bit and actually end up reducing the consumption.
There are communities around here that have what's called a inclining or increasing block rate. So there's the base rate, and then if you use beyond a certain amount, and that's, you know, variable depending what you want to do, then, then the cost per unit of water goes up. And then for the really big uses, it goes, some have a dual step, some have a three-step inclining block, block rate, and that's absolutely something you could do.
Well, that's what we see on the PGE bill, when you hit a certain threshold, it's suddenly a lot more for everything.
That has the advantage, it, it is going to encourage conservation, A, and B, it allows folks who are on fixed income to order their use in such manner that they're not paying that penalty.
We, Doug, we answered, we, I had, that was a question that we had as a commission, that there was a memo in our packet that attempted to answer, that basically I, we asked was water demand, you know, how does conservation take into account, you know, during peak demand, and does conservation affect financing? Well, the, the answer is, is that, as Walt said, it's less, it's less revenue, but it saves, you know, the individual consumer. So it depends on.
We'd still need the same, we'd still need the revenues for operations.
I understand that, but, but, but the, it could be distributed differently is basically what I'm saying.
I think it's interesting that, that the utilities are sending out some additional information. We get one about once every two months from Portland General because we're on the, we get the.
The energy.
Yeah, and it says, compared to your neighbors, you know, you're using X, and every month so far, we've been less than our surrounding neighbors, we're using less electricity, and I, of course, go, woo, you know?
There is also a question brought up about, should we be looking at wells in Oregon City? This is something that we talked a little bit about yesterday, too. John Lewis and Mayor Neely and I went to Willamette Valley Resilience Conference, and the Planning Commission brought up a good question about, should we investigate an alternative, it's partly a source and partly a storage mechanism to store it underground? And the Planning Commission recommended that that be incorporated in the master plan, is not, don't do it now, but in the master plan, it should be a recommendation to evaluate, to look at, study that and see, we'd probably work with South Fork to some extent on that, and see what the viability is for that, and when it would make sense, and et cetera, how much it would cost, and all that.
Back several years ago, I don't remember his names, except he always said, his last name began, rhymed with hinges, but a fellow that was in, in, in the south end area but outside the.
Oh, Dinjas.
Huh?
Dinjas.
Dinjas, thank you. Anyways, so that helps. Anyway. The, he was, he was on well water, and he said, and I'm sure he was attributing partially to stormwater runoff, that he, that the, that, at the water table was going down, and had been going down with the development. And I don't know how sustainable that would be unless we really changed the way we, I mean, if we direct our stormwater into wells or something of that nature, you know, where we could recharge the wells in some, in some fashion.
That's, that's getting pretty complicated for EPA, but.
Yeah. Yeah, Matt.
But, but the idea is looking at, maybe you would be charging the groundwater when you have excess water.
Mm-hmm.
And not in the summer, and storing it, it's a aquifer storage reservoir.
Yeah.
And so those are all, a lot of cities are doing that. And I thought it would be a prudent, I thought it was a prudent recommendation to.
CRW's pulling a million gallons a day out of their well, so, you know, if we can, and my concern with the wells, too, is, you know, what if something happens to our intake? You know, we're, we're down to one source.
I was going to say, we should do that just for emergency and disaster planning. We should know where the wells are.
We do have an emergency intertie, but for a severe emergency, but it's never hurts to have alternatives.
It's also the case that if we can tap into that winter use, the fact is, we've got more Clackamas County, Clackamas River users, and as growth occurs in Damascus area and so forth, that, that demand on the, on the Clackamas River is going to increase, and we're in pretty good shape because we've got senior water rights, but the, the impact to the region can be very significant if we don't start adopting such, such measures.
Mm-hmm. And that's, we participate in the Portland Regional Water Consortium, and those are the kinds of things that that kind of an umbrella agency can kind of look over and work, we can all work together on looking at the long-term and natural resources and that kind of thing.
It's better to look into it now when it's not a crisis than when somebody is sitting on a few million gallons, says, oh, I'll sell it to you, and here's the price.
They realize what it's worth.
Or a few million dollars. So the, one other point I wanted to make was a question that often comes up in these meetings, is what growth rate did you consider, and when is this build-out going to happen? And we considered a range in growth rates, and Walt was determining the future needs, but he also looked at the land uses, and we used the consumption of the existing land uses to estimate the consumption of the growth land uses, so that there wasn't really, we didn't say, oh, it's assuming 5% or this or that. And then the, the other thing we didn't try to do at all is estimate when it's going to happen, because, you know, we can see, since 1990, in this community, I mean, we had these huge spikes in growth, and then now we've just had this plateau's. And so it was, what we, what we did was, we developed a plan that would identify the pipe system and reservoir system needed to serve the UGB. And it can occur in time. What we might need to be a little careful about is when we go and update our system development charges, we're going to have to make some sort of an estimate, because you can't necessarily be charging in the next 10 years for something that might not be needed until 40 years from now. So we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
Your average growth, you know, for the last decade was, I don't know, it's quite high, it was, but if, if you were to grow at 3%, which is significantly lower than what you were growing for a while. You would hit the build-out population by, by 20 years.
And I bet that's not, I'll bet you that's not going to happen.
We don't.
I don't know.
No.
I have a question about, have you considered mandatory zero-scaping with growth?
No, we have not.
Could you, could you tell me what that means?
You know, landscaping, it doesn't take anywhere.
Oh, landscaping, okay.
She wrote scaping.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that's sort of outside the, we didn't, we didn't assume we'll have that kind of low irrigation demand with future growth. And if our zone, we, what we had to do is base it on what's, what's real.
Currently on the books.
Exactly, right. We couldn't start speculating and changing things because Tony would not like it if I started messing with the zoning code.
But you know, differential.
Can I, Tony? Can I mess with you?
Differential, differential rates probably would encourage that kind of direction.
Yeah, because, I'll tell you, I just wouldn't move into a community that didn't let me have a lawn.
Right.
You know, I just.
See plastic lawns?
That's right.
Well, I, I lived in Los Angeles and, and San Diego, where the green lawn was the blacktop painted green. And, you know, so, you know, which was great for maintenance. But, you know, the reason why I live in Oregon is to have a lawn and to have fruit trees and things that consume water. And so, you know, if it costs me more to have it, then I have to make that decision. But to have it as a mandatory thing of fierce, you know.
You can have your own private reservoir, we get 30 inches of rainfall a year, you know, you could get a lot of water that you could start up.
Get those rain barrels out.
I almost did because I had a crack in my line next to the meter, and the box was full, and the marsh was growing.
And you were, was it on your side of the meter, I hope?
Actually, it turned out that the, that the whole meter just box needed to just be tightened, and I don't know which pipe it was, but it, somebody, I had a stand pipe and, and somebody ran into it some dark night and twisted it.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it was, I had the reservoir for a little while.
I was going to say, I do think the tiered rate structure would encourage a certain amount of conservation, and a lot of people do use the rainwater reclamation barrels for watering their plants, you know, they, they collect it from their downspouts, so that helps a lot.
It does, yeah. So are there any other questions? We, we scheduled this meeting so we'd have plenty of time to discuss, and, but if we don't have any more questions, or don't need to discuss anymore, that's okay, too.
It's not so much a question. It's, one of the things that we felt a little uncomfortable about was really talking about the financing structure. Obviously, that is something that you all will have to grapple with. And I think one of the things that I thought about again this morning, and then as I drove in, is we're, we're looking at the water systems plan, I think, in a little bit of a vacuum, and we have other systems development charges and other master plans that are coming up. And I'm hoping that in your deliberations about rates and all of that, that you maybe could take into consideration looking at other things sort of across the board, because I think looking at water without looking to see where we are, at least preliminarily with our sewer and our transportation, is really going to put you at what I feel is going to be a disadvantage. And the public is, I think, once they know more, are going to want to look at maybe some cumulative effects. So while you have to deal with this separately, there is basically these other fees out there that you'll need to sort of reconcile a little bit or at least have some understanding of how those relate to this and financing for those things down the road. So it's just something I wanted to, that we talked about last night, the Planning Commission, we wanted to bring up and say, good luck. Thank you for looking at this.
I thought about that a little bit too, Commissioner McGriff. And interestingly enough, what I've talked to the city manager about and this, it's been brought up because of our sewer system.
Right.
We've had discussions about our sewer system needs. And one of the things I'm proposing for next spring is to, it's all, it's sort of, a lot of this is already in my mind, but what I would like to do is provide a blueprint that we show, we bring out, show, this is when we're updating the master plans to give some sense of when, when we could expect change. We've got some rate increases that were going over five-year periods and some of those are coming to a close in the next couple of years. And then we've got Troy City rate increases, South Fork rate increases, and it's, it's tough politically. So, but in the same token, we need to provide good infrastructure and we need to sustain it so that it's, we're not paying more later. It's a real, it's something that, I think it's just the more transparent you are about it and the more people are informed, maybe the better it could go.
The, the replacement that you've been talking about, the two mile replacement, I mean, are you roughly at the same thing on, on the sewer systems at all? So this, this has a higher priority, not only because we're frozen into the current, into the percentage, but because we have to do a lot more replacement of water lines.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be doing the sewer master plan in about a year. We'll be back here 12, 18 months or so and 24 months maybe. But anyway, then we'll have much better information on that.
I have a suggestion, is it maybe not the right time to suggest it, but thinking of when I had children in school, in grade school, if, if there was a simple explanation with a display like this in the school when I went to pick up my children every day, it would make an impression on me and it would hit a lot of people.
And for what it's worth, it might be worth it to contact the, the high school. They've got a lot of seniors looking for their senior projects and maybe they could get to work developing informational materials and having, you know, manning a booth at various events, talking about it. You know, it's all, all stuff they've got to do to graduate and this is about as civically involved as you can get.
I think when we go on our goal setting sessions, I, I think we probably ought to tackle this and get it out to the voters earlier than later. I don't, we don't want to wait on last minute.
Maybe do it once or twice.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And so I would, I would say we ought to really look at that closely.
I'd like to just follow a little bit what Commissioner McGriff was talking about. Our discussions in the Planning Commission as it came, as it related to the revenue and expenses and financing was that we didn't feel comfortable endorsing the financing plans because we, we didn't have any empowerment to make any decisions about where the rate structure might go. But one of the points I thought Commissioner McGriff made last night that is really relevant and some of the audience has even made comments related to that is that incrementally, what may look like a small increase when you multiply it by all of the other utilities can add up to a big increases. And it's especially a hardship on people on fixed incomes. And we, we may end up with a situation if the rate structure gets too high. As Walt had pointed out, conservation tends to reduce revenue so that it may be counterproductive to raise the rates too high because people will just stop watering their lawns to save money on their, their bills. So I, I think our consensus was that there needs to be a global look at this whole thing and not just looking at the water, but all of the utilities and how that affects the, the population as they... It affects people's habits or the way they, their lifestyle, how they live.
Although, I guess, along, I mean, I, I agree that was the discussion and that was the consensus. But, you know, in, in thinking about it in my years of public involvement, you know, there's one advocate who keeps coming up, meeting after meeting, saying, you know, people need to pay their fair share, particularly seems to be talking about developers. But, you know, and, but, you know, the citizens need to also. And so, you know, when nothing happened in the eighties and nineties, people were riding on the coattails of the expenses that people made in the sixties and seventies. And now we're paying the price for all that coattail revenue. Instead of 1% or 2% in 1981, we're looking at 8% and 10% in 2011. And, you know, it's, yeah, it, it's a bad thing for people on a fixed income. And if you have any program for somebody with fixed, that means that people who aren't on fixed income have to make up that difference.
That's right.
So at a certain point, you just have to say, this is the cost of doing business and we're really sorry. And by the way, there's some state programs for people on fixed income, maybe you should talk to them. But, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a shame, but that's the reality. I mean, my grandfather bought his house for $300 and he had an acre of land with it and he's just up off Oak Street on Lynn Avenue. And, you know, that's all it cost him to buy his property in, you know, 1947. We sold it for $120,000 and they had to do a lot of work on it to, you know. So it, that's, things are more expensive now. And so it's unfortunate, but...
Well, and it's, a lot of it has to do with values too. I, I'm not going to get on a big soapbox here, but I think we, we figured out that for sort of a typical average family, maybe slightly small, spends about a buck a day on water in Oregon City. And when you consider how, how valuable having clean water at your service, you know, is it worth a dollar a day? Is it worth $2 a day? It, for me, yeah, it is. And I might rather give up something else in order to do that. I totally understand the fixed income situation, but it is, it's a, there's a lot of, a lot of things to think about.
We looked at our utility bills and water, in fact, maybe all of them together. We looked at the utility bills, we're playing on Verizon and a lot of other things.
Oh, my cell phone bill?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, those, yeah, yeah. You know, I think, I think, I don't think people perceive it in that fashion. In fact, I think it was John that made that particular point to me, John Lewis. And, I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to be absurd about it. I mean, that'll just irritate people, but there's a point at which you put, you try to put it initially in a little bit of perspective so people see where something you actually need versus something that is still...
Necessity.
I, I think, I think, I was going to say convenience. Those things tend to be necessities when we start out as conveniences.
Yeah, exactly.
But water is an absolute necessity.
Yes, it is.
You know, Walt made a, a, a point in his presentation to the Planning Commission that he didn't make tonight. And I think it's, the, the one thing that we kind of latched on as a commission is that in the, the charts that he developed, he didn't break out the portion of it that had to do with the maintenance of the system. And we thought it would be a good idea if graphically that was identified so people could see where that maintenance portion of the budget was. And the, the point that he made there was it's, it's like the old ad, pay me now or pay me later. But it's always less expensive to maintain the system now than it is 15 or 20 years from now.
Right, yeah.
I think it is, it is a question of values and I've, I've spent a lot of time abroad, third world countries, on water systems.
Walt, can you get up to the microphone?
I'm sorry. I've spent a lot of time on third world countries on water systems and when you, you know, you don't appreciate being able to turn on the water and being actually drink it. Where if you, you know, where I was, if we brushed our teeth and forgot and swallowed, then you were at risk. And having had giardia, I can tell you, it's not pleasant. Yet where I was, or actually my daughter was in, in Bolivia, the average person lives with six active stomach parasites in their system at any, at any given time. And, you know, only about 10, 15% of the world's population has access to safe drinking water. And so we take it for granted, but it is not something you should take for granted. Because when you have giardia, all of a sudden you realize just how unpleasant it can be, right?
Yeah, you know, and that might actually be something that we want to, you want to do as part of your information campaign. There's been a couple of towns recently that have had to go to boiling their water because of problems. Maybe have a couple of, just, just go find an ordinary family and have them come and, and talk about how inconvenient it was to not be able to, to not be able to safely take a shower, to, you know, have to boil the water just to brush my teeth, to all the things that I use water for when I'm cooking. My, my Kraft macaroni and cheese, I can't eat it. Ah, you know, so, I mean, it's just, but those are reality checks that, that people, you know, sometimes need. I, I had friends in Vernonia when the flood was there and, and there was like, you know, it was just, you know, appalling what I, you know, it's like, all the, all the stuff that I ordinarily used water for was, you know, I'm carrying around six and seven bottles of water just be, just to take care of routine needs and, you know, I can't go to the drinking fountain. I've got to, you know, and so that's, that might be kind of a little useful, you know, whether it's Willamette Falls TV doing an article on it or something. It's, you know, it's America and look at this, this is what you got to do. And this is what you don't have to do because we're doing this. And if you pass this, then we won't, we won't be looking at that because we'll be maintaining and so on and so forth. So, anyway.
Well, Damon, I just wanted to add that I think that all the things that you said were, were really good and I think that people are going, some people are going to take that to heart. But I think I want to circle back around with something that Nancy said about being transparent. And a lot of people may skip over that. They're going to want to know what the bottom line is. And I think that if the public has some idea of what expectation is going, what the expectation is going to be for maintenance fees and whatever, I'm not saying they're going to roll over and accept it, but people will be aware. And I think just trying to put myself in, in that place is, is that I, I understand a lot of this and I think in our role, what we do with the Planning Commission, we understand this a little more. But it's still, people don't want to be nickelled and dimed or are perceived to be nickelled and dimed. And if we can lay out the costs in a clear and understandable manner, I think, well, for some people it may be a bitter pill and we'll hear about the fixed income people. But again, I, I think we really can't look at that. We have to really look at what our costs are and what we need to maintain and sustain a system, not only water, but sewer and roads and the other things that we use. And it's, and it is, it's a little bit bigger picture, not focusing on this one thing, even though that is the critical item, but letting people know it's, you take it for granted. I know you have the pothole hotline and I'm thinking, well, you know, maybe I should just be driving just a little slower and not hit that pothole or go around that pothole or, you know, they're doing other things and maybe they just can't get around to fixing it. So it's just, it's not going to be easy, but I think we will be better off in the long run. And I think transparency, again, transparency, transparency, transparency is where we have to be.
I agree.
I presume we're going to take this show to the CIC for at least...
It already has.
It's already been there.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, that's right.
December.
That's right.
We're going to go on the Neighborhood Association Roadshow.
Yes, Mayor Neely, the Water Master Plan will be coming for the City Commission on January 18th for the first, first City Commission hearing.
Good. We're always the last to get it.
Saving the best for last, right?
But that's almost not the case. We wouldn't have done a circle back on the Planning Commission.
Right, right, yeah.
Almost isn't.
Right. Well, hand grenades in politics, isn't that the same?
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank you all for your presentation and all of the showing up like this. This is, this is good, even those who had seen it before.
It just reinforces it every time you see it, that's...
Yeah, I really thank the Planning Commission because I think there's some really good dialogue that you guys brought to the table tonight, so thanks.
So I presume this is a work session. There's no managerial report or anything of that we have to tolerate, is there?
Right on your agenda, your honor.
How's that?
It's right on your agenda, but it's going to be short.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll be blessed to say that anyone here... I just want to give you a mention, reminder that Willamette Falls Legacy Project, which is the name of our consortium of city, county, state and metro. The deadline for the offer on the Blue Hare property is the 15th and we hope to have some public information out to Commissioners tomorrow about that. About what we're going to do there. It's going to just be a two-page document that you'll have information on.
There's no chance that they're going to add a last-minute extension, are they?
Well, there's always a chance because the trustee can do almost anything that they want to with regard to the offers. They can, they can ignore some, take others, they can, they can try to get a bidding war going, which is actually one of the things we're cautious about. That's why we may not actually have the numbers there initially, more of a letter of interest. So we'll see. It's, it's...
Yeah, I know.
It's a turkey shoot. But I think it's going to actually take some time and I think it's going to be interesting. But we have a different agenda than they do. The trustee's role is to get as much as they can for the property, period. And our role is to get the property for as little as we can with a period. So it's going to, it's going to take some time, I think. But we'll know more and you'll have a piece of information tomorrow that I would encourage you to keep after we get it out to you because it's just helpful, basic information that you'll be able to use in communicating with your constituents as well. And we'll probably have it on our website too, so. Last thing is I'm going to be going on vacation next week for, I'll be, I'll be leaving Thursday morning and I won't be back for a couple of weeks, but Tony and Scott are both going to be taking turns.
But Dave, are you coming back?
I don't know, you should answer that.
Two days before you know it.
That's a good one. Well, I may be back on the 28th, but I'm scheduled to be out till the 1st. And I may come back early just because I like it here so much.
Good answer.
You just know how far behind, how much further behind you can be in terms of...
Unfortunately, some of the things, some of the projects we have are, it's a kind of, I thought it was going to be a perfect time to be gone, but this one little crisis we have with this dark fiber thing has caused me to get a data plan for the iPad. Don't know if I'll use it, but I haven't. And if you want me to talk just a little bit about that?
Sure.
We had a, a meeting this morning with the county, it lasted two and a half hours. We really, I think, made a lot of headway as far as educating them about how a franchise works and how it doesn't work. And I, I've said this though, the last time, so I could be wrong. Our interpretation of the meeting was that it was the most positive one yet and that we, we did, I did convey to them, we did talk about numbers back and forth. And I want to remind the Commission that because we're now at the stage where we're negotiating numbers and this is closed session material, that if you do get contacted by anyone, and I wouldn't be surprised because that's sort of the flavor of what we're doing here, it's better to say nothing except through us because we're doing the negotiating. And we will probably have something back to you shortly after the 1st of the year. We got some numbers from them today. One of them, you know, there's basically two numbers in this, in this method that the franchise fee is paid for, to the extent that the city lowers its standard 275 linear foot fee to the county to try to accommodate this project and make it happen for them. And, and really the reason we're in this position is because they didn't budget for the franchise fee. And we didn't know that they weren't budgeting for it because they didn't tell us they were even planning for it. So we could have told them early if we'd have known early, we don't. So now we're in this box and we're trying to make it work. The lower we, let's say we take our franchise fee from 275, for every, every penny we lower that franchise fee, we're treating them different than we do... do other franchisees, and the, the bigger that difference is, the more likely it is that the city gets sued, if the city got sued and sued successfully, that means that whatever that lowest fee is that we are offering someone, let's say we offer the county some ridiculously low rate, Comcast and all of our other franchises come forward and say, "We want that deal, we're just like them," and then we're trying to say, "Well, a pipeline isn't really a fiber, and a fiber isn't a pipe," and, but increasingly, I mean, years ago, everybody was the same, the same people that had the fiber also had the pipe, but increasingly, it's not, they're, I mean, it's all mixed up, and so, what we're really worried about is the legal exposure we have in that scenario, because what, what it could mean is a huge hit to the Oregon City taxpayer, in the form of the 1.4 million roughly, which is what we get from our franchise fees collectively in a given year, well, if, for example, we lost in court over this county, the discount we're giving them, or offering them, if we lost in court, we might have to lower all of our franchise fees to that discount, okay? So that means, that could mean $500,000 a year, $600,000 a year in lost revenue, and I don't have to remind the Commission what that means for our taxpayers, because they're, they're essentially then would be subsidizing this county project, and we're already, we have a county, one county-owned property up here that's, we spend over $140,000 a year in police services, just servicing that one property, and it's tax-exempt, and this is a point that I reinforced today in our meeting, you know, we're already, we, we're glad you're here, county, but we're taxpayers in the county as well, and our citizens should not have to subsidize your operations any more than they already do, and I think, I would think we would all argue that we subsidize it enough already, and, so, we're, we're having those discussions, I think it went pretty well, and we're gonna probably have more, but our, our offer to their offer will go out probably tomorrow, or the next day, but probably tomorrow.
Yeah, I, since I'm on the Planning Commission, I have no oar in the water except as a taxpayer, and another thing I know is what I read in the newspaper.
At that time, you know, that was not a very, not real clear.
Yeah, but, it just, just that little bit, though, in the newspaper is, if, if they're gonna allow private access to it, then they're a private company, I mean, if it's, if it's only county, connecting county things, and, and, you know, it's a government emergency service, I, I think there's a real easy justification to, even to the other customers, but, you know, if Bob's, you know, Facebook service can access it in some way, shape, or, it becomes a private organization with, you know.
Well, they need our definition now, anyway, even if they don't have private fiber in there, they need our definition.
I'm just saying, just from only the little bit in the newspaper that I know, and not anything else, it seems like, you know.
Well, they're also, have disclosed to us that they're making deals with other private, I mean, they wanna fill that thing up, because they can lease fiber out, and.
Right.
Sort of like, you know, I don't mind if you got, the county makes a little revenue off this, I don't have a problem with that, to the same extent, I don't have a problem with the schools saving significant revenue, I think that's wonderful, but it can't be at the city's expense.
And, and just like Comcast is making significant revenue off of their lines crossing, and they're not paying, you know, they're paying a tiny proportion of the hundred and some odd dollars they're getting from me, so.
And we're gonna be proposing, again, we're gonna be proposing a reduced fee per linear foot, probably about the standard for the gross revenue calculation, and they pay one or the other, whichever is higher, so initially, they won't have a lot of gross revenues, so it'll mostly be the per linear foot, and as their revenues increase, then that, that linear foot cost would go down to them, and eventually be nothing, if they hit roughly $2 million a year in revenue, they'll, they'll get to a place where they don't pay a linear foot fee, because the revenue from the, the gross revenue will be higher, and it's interesting, I guess we're all capable of doing this, but when they were trying to sell us on the idea of a pass-through from the private sector to reinforce these rates, these franchise fees, they said, "Well, gosh, you know, city, you can make money, because look at all the new fibers, it's gonna, every time one of them lights up, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to charge a franchise fee for that," and of course, the initial questions for us were, "How are we gonna know?"
Yeah.
And they said, "Well, we're gonna tell you."
Full disclosure.
That is what they told, we can audit that, and, you know, there are ways that we can try to find out what that is, but that's, that's a little bit of a risk, and then.
Well, the fibers are transparent, so.
Semi-transparent, but it's, it's been an interesting exercise, and I think really, you know, all of us are trying to do the best thing, the right thing, I think that the tactics haven't been that good, but I think that's a learning exercise, too, and I think Oregon City, the Commission has provided us a very solid, clear direction and backing, and we appreciate that, and that's definitely the way to deal with this situation, so, thank you, and.
Well, we understand the bottom line is it's going to affect our salaries.
Yes, we will not get our rate.
Yeah, you, yeah, I won't go, I won't go in that.
Good answer.
That's for, that's for.
Have a nice trip.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And I'd like to thank the police and parks and library for sitting through this ever-so-exciting thing, you're supposed to, but he's supposed to be, economic development should be here, 'cause this is part of his bread and butter, when he talks about how great the infrastructure is to the people, so he's supposed to be here.
We, we just invited him to a meeting, 'cause none of us have met, some of us have not met him.
Yeah, and he'll have enough time to actually know.
I have to thank Nancy I for working late evenings and weekends, and Nancy K as well.
You mean, some of you have not yet met him now?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I know.
I think we'd better have an introduction in that case.
I'm sure he's there, but, you know, we invited him to our Planning Commission.
Eric, you wanna, you wanna come up here and say something nice?
I wanted to say something mean.
And, you know, it occurs to me, maybe we should all introduce ourselves.
Oh.
Don't we have names?
We've got.
You can read your honor, that was one of the requirements.
Swap them around.
I can introduce myself as Doug Neely.
You could, Zachary, why don't you introduce yourself first?
I'm Zach Kenton, I'm on the Planning Commission.
Betty Maum, City Commissioner.
Denise McGriff, Planning Commissioner, neighbor.
Kathy Roth, City Commissioner.
Charles Kidwell, Planning Commission.
Planning Commission Chair.
We quipped a coin, actually, as to who was gonna chair the meeting, Doug Neely, City Commissioner Mayor.
David Mayby, Planning.
Rocky Sut, City Commissioner.
Chris Groner, Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, and now you get to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Eric Underwood, Economic Development Manager, I was planning on coming to a Planning Commission on the 9th, I believe, January 9th, just to kinda go over my work plan that I've developed for the coming months, and I still plan to do that, but I'm just really happy to be here and be working in Oregon City, I, I think there are some great things in store for, for Oregon City, and so, I'll be working to establish a good, solid economic development program for the city.
The reason we hired you is so that it'd be good things in store for Oregon City.
Absolutely, well, I plan to deliver, so.
Good, thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
Yeah, Roger.
Drive tech stuff, you got, one thing I liked about you.